It stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Glad you're all here. Next is roll call. Note those board members present. We also have Tammy Buhatchek that is meeting remotely tonight, so she is joining us through Google meets. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Bob Woods, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item number two, update from Kathy Bersky, Director, Kanabik County Community Health. Kathy, good evening. Hi, Kathy.
I'm not quite sure exactly what you're looking for, for an update, other than we have had an uptick in our numbers here in the county, but most of them are, really wouldn't be connected to the school. So I'm going to kind of just go off on how the school and public health will be working together as the school year starts and continues on. The Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health have a plan that they will provide a 14-day number of cases. 14 days is a long time, and so we have committed to providing, we get daily, I can go in anytime and see our number of cases. So at Kanabik County, we have committed to work with the schools and provide those numbers more frequently. Right now, we have a weekly meeting planned, but if we're seeing an uptick, we're going to be on the phone and talking to the schools much quicker than that. There is a grid of, you know, which learning model you should be in, and that formula and those numbers. To go to distance learning, it's like 81. To me, that's really high. And so we will also be looking at every single case that comes in and looking for the connections to the school. Is it staff? Is it kids? Is it a parent of a child in school? And we will be able to communicate that to the school and hopefully stay ahead of the game at all times. Don't want to wait until we hit that top threshold of any model before thinking about moving to that model. So we always want to be looking forward, providing that information, communicating constantly with the schools, and we have definitely said we would do that with both of the districts here in Kanabik County. We do the case investigations locally, so we are able to get that information as soon as we, and also Willia Health has been amazing. When they get a positive, we know before they tell Department of Health, and Department of Health tells us. They let us know first. Well, yeah, pretty much first. So we get a heads up and a head start on those investigations as well. The numbers you see online with the situation report and the numbers that we will be working with, with the school, may not always be exactly the same. We're working with numbers that, information that all of a sudden we might find out, oop, they're really just over the line in Pine County. So then we'll have to fix that number. I mean, there's a lot of different variables with the numbers, but that's what we are committed to do, committed to working with, and there's a lot of things up in the air. If we do get a case that is a parent or a child or connected to the school, what does that case investigation look like? How do we do the contact tracing? I see it, it will most likely be a partnership between us and the school. Minnesota Department of Health, if it's a big outbreak, may come in, and there's a threshold where they say they will come in and do mass testing. We have no other information on that yet. So there's a lot of things that are still up in the air, just like everything has been. This is a novel virus. We know, we don't know anything about it. Vaccine is still six months away, probably, and when it does come, it's probably going to be targeted to those most at risk. So really, the key things we have to do is social distance as much as we possibly can, wear the masks, and the hand hygiene are the three really big important things in the schools. And then with us doing the local case investigation, we can hopefully stay ahead and see the trends, communicate those to the administration, and help to make those informed decisions about moving to another model if that's necessary.
Well, we know it's changing literally by the day even more frequently, and just really appreciate you having this network, this close contact, and I think the communication appears to be very efficient, and we'll continue to operate that way, and I'm confident that, yes, you're doing everything you can, and we've got our team that's been absolutely on top of it and still working together.
Getting that information through the fire hose. That's what it feels like. But hoping to have a team to do that. I've said it before, even with H1, this isn't my first pandemic. H1N1, I was really happy to be living and working in Kanabik County, because we do have that tight network and that good communication and no turf issues, and it is a blessing, yes.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Kathy?
I do, Kathy. Thank you for everything that you do and working with us, and it is very reassuring to have a friend to work with through all of this. One of the questions I've gotten is, how much transparency are we going to be able to have with this? So we'll get information as a school district. How much of that are we going to be able to push out to the public?
Actually, we're hoping, we already have all of our case numbers on the Kanabik County website, and we're trying to figure out how to, because really, that number and that case rate per 10,000 is one piece of the puzzle. Even if we're over the case rate for a recommended model, if there's really no threat or risk to the school, we may not have to switch models. So it's one piece of the puzzle, and so I'm trying to figure out how to put information on the website, like the 14-day case rate. We can throw that out there. That's not a problem. But there's just so much more to it. There's a lot of pieces to that puzzle that, so I'm just trying to figure out how to put that out there and willing to take suggestions.
Well, it was a question that we had, and that 14-day case count, as it goes up, is concerning, and people are asking about that and how they find that. But I think it's going to be important for us all to push out that information that we're going to look at this, not just as a one single thing, as of what does that mean to the school district and what's the impact.
So I'm trying to kind of figure out how to put that all together simply without bogging people down with a lot of the other information, but maybe just some bullet points of the other pieces that we look at. And then that 14-day case rate, you know, it's higher today, but tomorrow it will, if we have no new cases, it will drop considerably. So it, you know, we had a little cluster almost 14 days ago. We'll have another little cluster that'll drop off in a couple more days. So if we are being good out there and what we're supposed to do, we can hopefully maintain that. And that's another message we're putting out constantly, is what you do today, where you go today, protected and not protected, will impact what happens tomorrow. So that's a message that we're trying to put out constantly.
And I think it's important for us, too. I mean, as a school district, to let people know, we're lucky. We're one of the lucky districts to be able to do in-person education, and we want to keep it that way. And the only way that we can do that is with the help of the public to keep these numbers down. Because we are bound a bit by the numbers, so we have some flexibility with it, but there is guidelines from the state that we're going to have to follow. So if the, if the community has outbreaks based on not being able to follow social distancing or masking, or whatever the case, we're going to have the consequences felt at the school.
If we get those cases where people, I don't know where I got it, we know it's community transmission with no known source, that's when we have trouble. That's what we have to be careful for, careful of.
Well, thank you for your diligence and attention to all of the details surrounding it, because every day it's something new for you, too, to be addressing.
Two fire hoses.
Well, we'll stay in close touch, so. Anything else for Kathy? And if you want to, or need to leave, you can, but I was just going to say, if you're around, feel free to interject if there's something as we go, too.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Great resource.
Hi, hello. I'm just going to jump in and kind of, I included the decision tree in your packet. It's right after your return to school plan. This is what we'll be using this year for guidelines on when students need to go home. It may change throughout the year, and it'll be updated for everybody if it does change. But basically, if a student or a staff member presents with any of the symptoms related to COVID, they will be sent home, and siblings as well, for up to 10 days to 14 days. And it's written down, it's written on the first, second, and third column. The, it's very hard to know the signs and symptoms of COVID. It can mask other illnesses as well, and so the Department of Health wants us to err on the side of caution, that we will assume it's a COVID-like symptom unless they can give us a different diagnosis. So if a child has a fever and a sore throat, and they end up going in, and it turns out to be strep throat, great, they can come back the next day after being on their antibiotics. And so there's a little bit of play with that, but the rest, it's pretty much, and so I just, we're going to start getting that information out to the public, that this is what we're going by, and so I don't want anybody to be surprised that we're going to have some children out for a significant amount of time this year.
I think everybody's looking for exactly what you're going to be providing. It's just that this is our first opportunity year. You're going to have all these firsts, and people really want to know and appreciate it, so.
Yeah, so just so you guys have it, and it will get posted on our website, and parents are going to get it with their return, you know, with the open house and stuff like that, and so they will all have it, and it's all out there.
Very good. Questions for you?
Well, information will start going out, and then district newsletters, too.
Fantastic. Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask, Ann, just a scenario question. Child comes to school, sore throat, ends up in your office. You call the parent, the parent, you know, takes him to the clinic, gets a throat culture done. Will they do a COVID test at that time, too? Or if they don't suspect anything, they will just, and then what's the protocol for the classroom for a student that maybe tests positive for?
So classroom policies is still being worked out with the Department of Health and exactly what will happen, and it'll be case-by-case scenario if a child is test positive.
Right.
The physician or the provider will be the one that will determine based upon the signs or symptoms, if they'll do a test or not do the test. And so we, as, with the health office, we really can't say what it is. We will have two isolation rooms here so that we can put them in a separate room, which is in the health office, so we'll still see them. But they will sit in there until a parent or guardian can come and get them to minimize if it is, and then that room will be cleaned as soon as that child leaves. And then we are just really going to be educating families like they've never heard before. And so the big key takeaway is, if your student is sick this year, they need to stay home. And so don't even risk sending them to school, which is going to be a huge inconvenience. Get it. But this is not the year to be, we have to play it safe. And so if we want to continue staying open, and we have to stay home if we're ill, and that goes for staff as well. So we've been educating them, too. But, you know, it's going to be a lot of figuring out, what are their signs and symptoms? Is this something new? Is this something that we know that they have? And I'm working closely with families, but we will be erring on the side of caution, and more students will be getting sent home versus resting for a few minutes and sending them back to class, because we don't want to risk infecting the entire class.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
New routines at home established to, like, take temperatures and...
Absolutely. A big thing will be taking temp at night and in the morning, and there's a daily check screen that'll be going home that we want parents to kind of run through, and if they hit any of those things, we want them to stay home.
Ann, I have a question for you. When do you anticipate, or are you getting any word on when you're going to get these guidelines to push out? Have they mentioned any timeline for that?
Before school starts. I mean, I'm hoping. They keep telling us, you know, each, so I do a weekly call with Department of Health, and then we can email them questions as they come up as well, and they just keep saying, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And so I haven't heard. Some of the big key topics are this, you know, the guidelines, what we're going to do if we get this case. But again, that'll be a case-by-case scenario, and they'll work with us closely, and our regional team, and local public health. But hope, they said that they are going to be having some templates coming out, and so we're just kind of waiting patiently.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to hear about the 2020, 2021 Return to School Plan, and Mr. Volchere.
Yeah. Can I just thank Kathy and Ann publicly? They've been amazing. I've been on several calls with other area superintendents, and Kanabik County Public Health has been at the very top compared to some of the other counties, and the communication and the collaboration and support has been amazing with Kathy and Kate. And I'm sure Ann could say the same thing. So we're in very good hands with Kanabik Public Health.
Thank you.
All right. Here we are. Here's our Return to School Plan. So if you remember, on July 30th, the governor came down along with the Minnesota Department of Education with their plan, Safe Learning Plan. And here we are on August 12th. I'm not sure how many days that's, 12 days, I think, right? So here we are. Last week, all of our school team, planning team that was put forth in June, came together, and each department had kind of a page to do. And we've been working kind of in the background a little bit. We presented to the board, I think it was at the July meeting, and gave a rough sketch of kind of where we're at in the planning, and then all of a sudden, we got the planning from MDE and the governor, and we had to change, do some changing and adjusting, as did every other school. We weren't anticipating that. So we just want to go through this plan with you, and feel free to stop us as we go. Do we have Randy's? So the Safe Learning Plan, that was, I think I shared with you at one point in time. You're probably getting information overload as well as board members, but this is the document. It's a 21-page document. And really, the goals of MDE's plan is, one, is safety and of the students and staff. That's A number one, and that's the reason why it's number one. And number two is, everyone has realized, students, elementary and high school-age students need some face-to-face learning and in-person learning, especially for younger learners is really important. That's two. Number three, what Kathy and Ann were talking about is considering the risk of the transmission among the different grades, and that's what those case numbers are for. And then support and planning while permitting some flexibility for districts. So as Kathy said, there's some guidelines with numbers. However, there's also some other determining factors that go into making that final determination. And when the school district is making a determination on what learning model to use, we will be working very closely with Kanabik Public Health. Like she said, every day, they're looking at the numbers, and every week, we're meeting, and if they see something, they're going to get ahold of us and be working with us. So I feel really confident in that. And then take into account that, that local level disease, and we've been fortunate, like Kathy said, in Kanabik County so far. And then this is kind of how we determine the models, kind of the data from the counties per 10,000, and then working with local county public health to determine which learning model is best, and then being able to monitor those cases and be able to adjust the different learning models, and we'll go through those different learning models with you. So the three different learning models, this is nothing new. Back in June, they told us, be ready to do any one of these three. And so we had already developed a highly, I would say, effective hybrid plan and very detailed, and we've done distance learning before, and so we were going to make that better. And now the in-person learning model, which we know how to do in-person learning at school, it's just not going to be the same type of in-person learning. We're going to take a lot of precautions. We're going to do a lot of different things to make sure that students are staying distance, and we're practicing good safe with masking and things of that sort. So you can see the requirements. I'm not going to go through all those with you, but masking, like we said, the state is going to provide PPE for students and staff in the form of masks and shields. We're going to educate our students and our parents. Cleaning is going to be frequent cleaning of high-touch surface areas. Our buses are going to be cleaned every day and probably between morning and afternoon routes. We will have COVID coordinators at each site. We will be limiting the visitors, volunteers, external groups that use our buildings and grounds, just to make sure that we're not getting infection from the outside into our learning areas in our schools. And I know it's going to be inconvenient for the people that use our schools. However, if we go back to goal number one, safety and security of our, or safety of our students and staff, then I think we have to adhere to that. And then, like Ann said, we'll just be continually monitoring and exclude students for illness. And then when we go to the hybrid model, that's where it gets really strict, or stricter, I should say, where we have to have social distancing of six feet at all times, school and transportation capacity at 50%, so half the kids coming, and then sufficient staffing. We have to be able to have sufficient staff. So this, again, is something that you saw before. And right now, we are in that eight range. I think, as Kathy said, most of the cases have been not associated or tied with the school district or students within the school district or staff. And then you can see, if we would have to go to Phase Two, the elementary would still be in in-person learning, and the high school, grade seven through 12, would be in that hybrid learning. Okay? And then it just kind of ramps up. Phase Three would be hybrid for everyone. And then Phase Four would go to hybrid for pre-K and distance learning for the high school. Like Kathy said, when you get into that distance learning model, the numbers are really, really, really high. You know, that's probably more like some of the districts in the metro area are doing distance learning. So there's our most current data, like Kathy said, 8.74, and she said, you know, within the next couple days, that could be reduced greatly, because there was an uptick about, she said, at the beginning of that time period. And so the numbers that we get, Bob, when you alluded to the numbers that we get from the Department of Education, those numbers are actually two weeks old. So there's a huge lag, and apparently, there's some, something to do with privacy issues and things of that sort, that they're not giving this most current information. But Kathy is giving us this most, this updated information. So we'll, we really appreciate that, because we can be on top of that, and we don't have to be working two weeks behind the eight ball. So I think that's good. And then you can see, this is how they reported to us with the number of cases that are tied to more public schools, and right now, there's two parents with cases.
And I just want to point out, this is the learning model parameters out of the MDE July 30th document that they gave us. What we did, we decided to, because there's, they say three learning models, but really, there's five different configurations, because elementary could be doing something different than high school. So we decided just to develop a common language and understanding of each of those configurations with the word Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, Four, and Five, just so that you know, the public will know, if we're going from a one to a two, like, what does that, what are the ramifications of that? And so that, we added the more phases. You won't find that in anything, except we created it, and just so that there can really be, everyone can know exactly what each of those configurations means.
Great anticipation, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, see, that's wonderful, yeah. So what drove our decisions in the planning process? When we got that July 30th information, we realized it was different than what we thought it was going to be. Kind of going back to the drawing board, quickly, I thought about transitioning from a one to a two, and if the elementary kids were all in-person, creating space, not held strictly six feet, and seven through 12 then had to transition to a hybrid, they have to now be strictly six feet. Transporting kids to school then gets pretty difficult. All of a sudden, our regular bus routes on in-person, all of the seven through 12 riders now have to have a much different seating chart, although the elementary does not. So there was kind of a glitch there with transportation. So when we really thought about, like, the first decision, when we came together on August 3rd, the whole group, that was the first thing we had to decide on, is how we were going to transport kids to school, because that drove pretty much the scheduling and most of everything else we could do. So we decided that from a COVID rate of zero to whatever, elementary would have a different route than the high school. And that's the only way we could be fluid and flexible and responsive enough to go from a one to a two, and then a two to a three is even stricter, is if we had two routes. And so that's what we decided to do. And then going right into that, so the second thing we wanted to create was a framework and a format, so that if we went from a Phase One to a Phase Two to a Three, you know, over the course of whenever, it would be smooth, it wouldn't be chaotic, there wouldn't be too many changes, families wouldn't have to do too many adjustments to what they were doing, classrooms wouldn't have to do too many adjustments. So we tried to think of all the different things and make it as smooth, it's not going to be, it's perfectly imperfect, as we say, but as smooth as we could to get those bumps out. So if we went from Day One in-person to Day Two hybrid, we could do it. And so ease of flexibility when transitioning. So a couple of the things we had to do. Seven through 12 has a lower threshold for going hybrid. They have a lower restrictive threshold. So they could ride that nine to 11 to 12 to eight to nine, they could ride that cusp right there and be going in-person and hybrid over the course of a shorter time than the elementary. So we wanted to make the high school model be something that the schedule would be able to adapt very easily. So what we did, I did, the high school did, they did an excellent job coming up with solutions. They spaced out their schedule over two days. So now they'll have odd periods or hours on Day One, and they'll have even periods or hours on Day Two. They added an eighth hour, that's going to be advisory or blue, so every other day, kids are going to have an advisory. And then that's going to be our model starting, starting the school year in-person. If we transition to a hybrid, that will be the model that we use on that AA, take that Wednesday off, BB with 50% of the kids. It'll be the same exact model with the same exact hours, same teachers. So it, I, and I was very impressed with them doing that, because it really is an impressive model. So I hope you're as impressed as I am. So so this is why we put that eight-period day in. And then also, if we go hybrid, which is more highly likely, seven, twelve than it is K six, that eighth period at the end of Tuesday and the end of Friday will give the teachers and the kids a chance to kind of decompress. Now they're going to have three distance learning days. They're going to make sure that kids think have things downloaded on their computer. So if their hotspot's not working, if their internet's cut off, whatever, they'll have the stuff on their computer to be able to execute those distance learning days. We still want them interacting with teachers, but if a family has situations, they'll have the stuff on their computer. So that's what that eighth period is for too, is that kind of decompression before you take those distance learn days. So that was the second thing we considered. And then the next thing, planning for the family flex option and accountability for those students because they're still our students. We still have to give them the same rigor, the same expectations, grades, attendance, interacting with classmates and teachers, so how do we do that? And so that was one of the important pieces is that even though the family has to for medical reasons or by preference want to do distance learning, they're still a part of what we do here at school. And so that would be in-person or the hybrid model. So having a staggered start allows for high school teachers to have ninety minutes in the morning where if they needed to check in with distance learning or family flex, they have extra time now built in their day. And elementary on the flip side will get out at two. So they'll have that ninety minutes at the end of the day to interact with family flex kids if they needed to on that distance learning model. And also at the high school, they're going to keep those kids incorporated into their rosters and their classrooms. So if you're on the family flex option, you're still going to have that eight-period schedule. And as much as we can, we're going to try to incorporate those kids synchronously, real-time, live into those classrooms. And so they'll, you know, they'll log on, if they have Dr. Stevens at nine o'clock in the morning, they'll log on and they'll be a part of the class. And then their documents and assignments will be available on Google Classroom, just like the other kids.
Quick, just a quick question, are you going off of the surveys that we've taken in the past as to who to contact for that specific program? Or are we going to re-contact the the population to see who wants to do that?
Yes, so we initially surveyed the families just though we had an idea.
Right.
Because we were trying to like formulate like, how important is this? Well, it's pretty important. And so Mr. Qual is, right?
Yeah, I'm doing a new survey, ready with the annual signup.
Okay.
And the approval of the name, except okay. That's the official, fill out the survey and give us additional information.
And many districts, I've been on a lot of calls lately, and lots of districts are doing the same thing. They're calling it registration or enrollment in whatever they're calling their option. And so that will be the registration process for getting on that family flex option.
And we're we're anticipating that families may want to shift between, you know, I may sign up for the family flex and it's not working out for us. Then we're going to allow kids to come back in-person if they they choose to do that, their family chooses to do that. So, you know, it's, we can't require them to sign up for the whole year. And we want to be accommodating to to families. We do anticipate there will be some that will have to use that model. And the state requires us to do that, so we're prepared to do that.
But are you betting on a number of times? Are you determining how many times a family can do that without just keeping everything really off balance?
Yeah.
Will there be a, will there be a maximum number of opportunities to do that before?
Well, yeah, that's a good question because a lot of people are saying, well, you know, we don't want people coming and going like
Right.
twenty-five different times or whatever. The one great idea that I heard from another district, or Brenda and I heard this on our ICS call, COVID conversation was they were giving families five days to notify. Or they they notified the district and the district has five days to kind of get them into a classroom or whatever. And so at least the school has some time to prepare for that. I haven't heard on whether or not there's a certain number or a cap number.
There is not.
There's not.
It just should be communicated and so there's an understanding. But I didn't know if you had talked about.
My guess would be, you know, if Dan Voce's kids are flipping flopping back and forth like ten times, Mr. Nelson probably would call me and say, hey, Mr. Voce, you can't be, you know, going back and forth all the time. This is not good for your student, not good for our 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 staff. So it'd probably be one of those personal conversations, I would think.
And then if kids might, you know, if there's a classmate and then I have to go home for the fourteen, ten or fourteen days, but so do my siblings, so does the seventh grader and the tenth grader if I'm in elementary. Well, if we're doing that synchronous learning and they're on the rosters and they're, the teachers are teaching them, they then just execute their schedule at home. And so that's another point with having the teachers and the kids all on the same schedule as much as we can, is to keep that fluidity between home and school. Because we know some kids aren't going to choose to go home, they're going to have to. And we still have to keep them engaged, so that's another piece.
That that was going to be my comment, and in terms of numbers, I think this year is going to be such as odd, obviously, year, but it's going to have kids coming and going in and out with quarantine or whatever they're going to have to do if they have symptoms, that we're going to have to flip kids in and out of this hybrid model throughout the course of the year.
And at the elementary, they're going to have a team at each grade level. And so there, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be a teacher who's going to be responsible for the family flex option. They're going to be working directly with the grade level band and having the same lessons.
They're going to continue to plan together, they're going to share plans together. Because when we share students back and forth, we want to make that as seamless as possible as well.
So each grade level from K or pre-K to six is going to have a teacher responsible for distant?
Based on registration numbers, that's our plan, yeah.
I think we'll have enough kids at each grade level that that will be justified.
And we have enough staff to do that?
Yeah, because we have intervention, we have an intervention team who, you know, we want to use them for interventions. But they may also have some other duties as assigned.
And some of that is, some of that is assuming that there's, in sixth grade, there's going to be a similar group that chooses the family flex option as compared to the numbers that are in the classroom already. So it's a teacher for a teacher.
Sure.
And just to reiterate, because I didn't have the microphone before, we're planning on sending that family flex form home tonight or tomorrow pending board approval. So families can sign up for that through Tuesday of next week.
Any other questions?
It's interesting, really good for accountability for families to be accountable as easily as families as well.
Because we are going to take attendance. Kids, families are going to be held accountable for attendance. Truancy laws apply. I'm, it's not spring distance learning, it's going to be nothing like it. We are going back to school and whatever that means, and we are grading. There's going to be grades, there's going to be transcripts. And so if you choose the family flex option, we want to service you. But it's going to be the same way we service kids at school. Oh, yes.
So I have an elementary student, let's just say I have an elementary student, and I test positive from my job. That student's not going to be able to come to school for fourteen days. You talked about having a five-day flip type of requirement. Can my child that next day get services from the school district for the next fourteen days that that child's quarantined?
Yeah, I think what we were talking about with the five days is by preference.
Yeah.
This is a distinction.
I realize that was probably the intent, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, we need to distinguish between quarantining and choosing to do it.
Good question, but yes, it would be by preference if you were going back and forth, you would have five, you have to give this five. But medical issues are way different, yeah. Um, so another consideration that drove some of our decisions, we wanted to make sure, well, we have to, have a piece in there for childcare of tier-one workers during regular school hours. And so with the elementary getting out at two, that leaves two to three fifteen, that would have been a regular school hours. So we are going to provide that bridge there until the end of the school day for tier-one workers. And then that's for in-person, and then that hybrid, when they have, when we have the three distance learning days, will be seven forty-five to three fifteen, so we will provide that tier-one childcare during the regular school hours on the distance learning days. And then again, on the in-person during hybrid from two to three fifteen. So and we do have to.
You're talking about the kids that aren't in.
Yeah, the.
School.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
It does, but it's it's so odd. Because you're going to, that means those kids are going to be in school five days a week.
Right.
In the building, even though.
They are.
Right.
Even though we're supposed to be at half capacity.
Yes.
Just seems counterintuitive.
It does. And we have asked, I, Ann has, you know, everybody's asked about it, and that's just, I think, the way it's going to be. So we just have to, have to make sure it happens.
Do we have space?
Yeah. Um, so the gateway document, I think, did you send this to them?
I did not, I don't think I sent them this.
Okay. Well, this is a one-stop shop for everything returning to school. And we we're calling it the gateway document. So you can find the master plan, the quick reference guide, information about the family flex option, which we might want to add the registration link to here when we finish. That initial parent survey that we did, definitions of the in-person model, transitioning plan. And then these links to here on the left-hand side on the, those are, each area of responsibility went through and did their own plan. And then some of those pages are also then included in the master plan. But if I just want to find out about childcare, I'm a parent, I can just go here and just click on childcare and I would go right to that page. And so you don't have to go through the whole twenty-three-page document, the master plan, to get the information you want. And then the preschool, elementary, high school, ALC. Those links there have a much more detailed, much more detailed pieces of information than in the master plan, such as the detailed daily schedules and things like that. So I thought I would just walk you through the master plan really quickly, so Randy, if you want to click on that. So this is the master plan. And this will, once the plan gets approved, then we'll just, we'll push all this out. So if we're going through here, some of this you've already seen, so we'll just kind of skim through some of this. And so the guidance and the planning, Dan covered that. It's just all about what MDE sent out and what we're, what we're bound by, requirements. And then this is, we just saw this, it's the learning model matrix here that we're going to be following. The whole state's going to be following. And then base learning models, which we just taught you about. And then you'll see at the bottom there is an example of the high school in-person learning model that they'll be executing every other day, that day one, day two, a rotation with that eighth period on there. And then there's the hybrid model with the examples there of what that's going to look like at the elementary and the high school. And then the base, or the distance learning, which we already did in spring, but we're going to be much better at now because we learned a lot of things. And then down at the bottom, there's things that are going to occur in-person during the in-person learning model and also during hybrid. The mask, the visual cues, students going straight to classrooms, not being allowed to gather in spaces. So things like that. The next page. Here, it's a very specific transitioning plan of between the phases. So if we go from phase two to phase three, what are the ramifications for that? What what happens? Well, all kids K through twelve now attend school on a hybrid A-B schedule. And then it explains some of those things, what happens with childcare, the daily schedule. And so this, if you get stricter, this will tell you exactly what happens when you have to ratchet up or dial up. And then on the next page, if we have to go backwards, this tells you exactly what's going to happen in those major areas that parents, staff, anybody might want to consider. And so and then.
It's kind of where the phase word.
Yes, yes. That's exactly where the phase word comes from. And then now comes the pages that you can get off the date, gateway page. You can go directly to childcare or you can get it here. And then transportation, that staggered start with loading the bus back to front, signage, things like that on there. And then nutrition and meals. So they went through, breakfast will be a gap, a grab and go. Lunch will be planned both at the high school and the elementary with in-person creating space with hybrid, they'll have to be six feet apart. So the building principals will be responsible for coming up with that plan and the seating. No snack part at the elementary, we won't be doing that this year. And yeah, and then technology. So Shane went through and took an inventory of all of our personal devices, student-related, and including the iPads that we have. And so he has stated, right? Kindergarten through twelfth grade, we have enough personal devices that every student will be able to have one if we have to go to that distance learning model, which is great. One big problem in the spring, families didn't have enough personal devices and it just did not work out very well. And so this eliminates that problem and gives every kid access with a personal device at home for distance learning, on the hybrid or the distance learning model. Initially, those devices in the elementary will be in the classrooms and the teachers will start practicing with them on those devices. And then if, it's a much higher threshold for them to go hybrid. But if we have to go hybrid at elementary, then they will have practice on their own device. There's no sharing of devices. And then they'll be able to take that home for the distance learning days, which is great. I mean, for hybrid or distance learning, yeah.
Brenda, another question related to school closings that I just, if we have to close.
Uh, you mean distance learning, like?
If they're in school, if they're in school, our times are.
You're saying for like a weather type thing?
Huh?
Like a snow day?
If we close, stay at noon or early.
That's an excellent question, I'm not sure if we've got to that yet.
Thank you, Karen, for asking that question.
We'll get a few months to get that one worked out.
As soon as we say, we wait, we go.
I noticed, I noticed Chip is in the audience.
We will put that on, we'll put that on Chip and Gail, they'll come up with a good solution.
I propose if we have a morning of bad weather, we will probably have to close school today.
Be a little bit more ahead of the game.
We're running two belts and pretending and throwing pitches and all that stuff. Not too bad a late start, probably going to be off the table in my opinion. I don't know what it looks like if we start school and all seven things, school is coming. But we do have some time, we have kids in the building, which are safe. So it's a little less of a headache.
Yeah. Other chances, but you have to have, it's just in case in the event, it's, yeah.
It's a realistic scenario.
Yeah, and believe me, I know there's, you can't think of everything.
Yeah.
There will be details along the way to be worked out, but.
Well, I'll let you put snow on our radar, we've got it on our radar.
Our eyes are cold. Another thing about transportation that we kind, we forgot to mention or the hybrid model is families will be on the A schedule and then the B schedule for those. The priority is to put siblings on the same schedule throughout the district. Um the priority is to put siblings on the same schedule um throughout the district. Uh Lane started the process at kindergarten and started dividing families out and we kinda worked it up. So we have those families divided and then before school starts, they're going to be um told if they're on the A or the B, so that when we go to phase two, everybody knows what that means. And so we're gonna just tell them upfront.
Yeah, so that's another part of the transition plan that families will know, kind of, if we have to go to hybrid, you'll be, you'll be an A day, you'll be a B day. And then all of their siblings will be together, so they don't have to worry about daycare or things like that, so. So that was good planning on someone's part, not mine, but somebody had a great idea.
Well, for transportation for sure, if they're riders with a sibling or with the parents dropping off, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when you, when you say sibling, it's, is that definition broad enough to handle household units? I mean.
Oh, household, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I, yeah, and I could start using the word household, yeah.
It's just language, yeah.
Household, yep.
Thank you.
And I just wanna publicly thank Lane, I threw that on her and she did an excellent job doing that. I'm sure it took her so much time, but she did a great job. Um special education, of course, is the law, we service those kids wherever they are, whether they're in school or they're choosing uh to do the family flex option. Uh Rum River has a very detailed plan, which I attached here at the bottom of this page, and so you can go and find theirs. Um it will drive what we do. They're doing um amendments to IEPs with what they're calling CLPs, contingency learning plans. And in each contingency learning plan, it has to account for what it looks like if a child's participating in person, a hybrid or a distance learning, and what happens at each of those levels for that child. And so it's going to be very time-consuming for our special ed staff, September's gonna be very busy for them. Um so districts are being um encouraged to be mindful of that. So we just have to make sure we're, they're taken care of. Um here's the family flex option, we have talked about that, so we won't be covering that. Um mental health, our, our social workers, our counselors at the high school, they put this together, I think they did a very nice job. There's going to be more details about specifically what they're doing at the elementary, what they're doing at the high school, and that will be coming out to students and families um later on. And then Mustang Strong. And then um health and wellness considerations, Anne put this together along with the checklist that she's going to be giving parents, um sending out to parents for that daily screening. We won't be taking kids' temperatures at school. Initially, districts thought they would do that, then on the bus, you cannot do that. You can't do Plexi class, you can't be taking kids' temperatures, right? And then um at the door, if we stop kids at the door and try to take, well, they can't congregate, we can't take the time to do that. So parents have, they have to be a partner in screening their kids at home, taking their temperatures, keeping them home if they have any symptoms that are COVID-like type symptoms, and um just make sure they keep in contact with the school. And so that's gonna be a really important partnership, is how parents screen their kids at, at home. And then um Anne added some links in here to teach people about masks and close contact. And then um she, we, we didn't add in that, that is a brand-new document that you got from that exclusion, MDH that she gave you, so we'll probably link that in here too, but. And just to let you know, there's probably gonna be several things like that as we go, we'll probably keep building on this and linking things in and updating um all, all the time. Um building and cleaning the sanitation, so Chip has gone through, he's created a plan with his staff and um training for the staff as well, I know they're doing that. And so they'll take care of the buildings that way. And then next, um oh, and this, so Chris and all the athletic directors in the state, last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday, they had their big meeting where, and believe me, every single day they're coming out with new stuff on that. So this is an ever-changing document right here. This is as much as we knew as, oh, I think, two days ago. Um but I think it's maybe been updated since then, so Chris will constantly be keeping in contact with families and coaches and kids and updating her documents because I'm sure that's going to change as we progress here. Um parent resources and communications, so that's the original timeline that we came up with. Just been checking things off as we go. Um and we did have our town hall meeting, was that yesterday?
Monday.
Day before, Monday. Um so we had that, we've had two of those so far.
Yep, and that was uh, the town hall meeting was just to review the plan with the staff. Um all staff, because we had our planning committees and they did a lot of this work and then we just communicated that out to the entire staff, so everybody heard the same message. We recorded it, so if anybody couldn't attend, they, they did, I think we had a hundred and twenty that I noticed on the town hall that day. So there were a few questions and we were able to answer those questions um for the staff. And so we've been sending out, you know, written uh communication along with the video. And I know Randy did one for his staff and Brett Nelson did one for the high school staff. So, you know, it's, it's, it's the way that people are doing business nowadays with the video conferencing, as we all know, and, and we're trying to utilize that so our staff stay informed and updated and feel like they're connected to, they're a part of the process anyways.
And then the last, um I think it's the last page, this is the, just a sample of the quick reference guide. And so this will all, this, you can get to this off the gateway document if you wanted to, if you were a family, you could print this, put it on your fridge. So when it's phase one or phase three in the elementary, high school, you could see exactly what that means in these major categories. Um so that's the point of this, is a, just a quick glance at the major categories and how does that impact the two sites. And that, I think, in a nutshell, is our plan. It's a big nutshell. Uh that's fantastic, though, I just, I am super impressed. Uh is this some of what you presented or have been presenting when you're um on stage with, through ICS's?
Right.
Sponsor?
Yeah, the first time we, we did, we presented a hybrid model, that was before the state came out with their guidance. And I don't know, Brenda, how many other schools do you think were on taking some of the stuff that we created?
There were a hundred and some, and then I had several superintendents from districts around the state contact me and they took our stuff. And since then, I've had people saying, oh, aren't you the one that was on then? I'm like, I don't even know who was on there. But, and then we went on last Friday.
Yep.
And um there were eighty, I think, different districts on there. And now we're just, the three districts involved are just talking through our process. We talked about some of our, the priorities we realized we had to have, changing our documents and stuff like that. And so you, besides sharing, you were able to learn also from the experience of having.
Right.
Two other districts that are.
Yeah, well, that need to be challenging too, is if we did it one way and then a similar-sized school district someplace else did it a different way, we would get people saying, well, they're doing it this way, why aren't you? The, the more uniform it be throughout the state, the, the better we're gonna be able to communicate and have far less questions.
Well, and, and Dan started a um superintendent group with the regional superintendents here that he's been on. And so they do that, they're trying to coordinate all that stuff, and I know we are up north as well, I did that this morning with them. And so everyone's trying to do that regionally, making sure that people are on the same page.
Do you feel like we are? Is that?
Well, I uh, I would say that we're, we're probably ahead of the game, from what I can gather from, just based on, you know, other districts are saying, can we use that? Can we use that? Um you know, I know our hybrid model that we put out with the AA and then take a break on Wednesday, BB. I, I think most of the schools are doing something like that. And um.
Well, last, last time I met, we were on Friday, I mentioned the phases. Because everyone is like, well, and when you do this and this, I said, just name them, like, name them the phases. And then after that, I had people contacting me, oh, could you show me what you, could you give me that table and sure.
It makes it a lot more concise.
Yeah, so just things like that. Sure appreciate your time and effort both, too.
I have a question, in, in those communications, this was asked of me today, is there any other, are you aware of any districts, neighboring districts that are not returning to at phase one?
Um yeah, good question, that, that came up with our superintendent meeting. So in the area superintendent meeting, we invited um Mora, obviously, Ogilvy, Malaca, Bram, Hinckley, and Pine City, and Pine City, uh the superintendent hasn't, hasn't been there, oh, Isle too, yep. Um and um all of them are planning on going in-person.
Their, their numbers are showing that they could do that.
Pine County is, is, I think, probably a little bit lower than we are right now, um at like five or so. But I don't get their current up-to-date numbers, but Hinckley just had their board meeting and they.
Just was asking about the communications you've had.
And Pine City, I think, did as well, last night, I heard, or Tuesday, is it Tuesday? I can't remember what day it is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know either. And if they straddle uh the county lines, they use the county with the highest rate. And so even if they're, some of them are in our county, but they straddle another line, they might go a different way, but it might be because of the other county that they border to, so.
Even there, they might be attributing some of those cases to a different district, so they're still localizing the, the cases. That's the, 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 the county health is what's charged with doing that, so.
Yeah, and that's when they, you know, they talk about localized decision-making, that's, I think, what they're talking about, is that, um just like Kathy said, our numbers are not really connected to the school. We, we still may be able to consider in-person learning or, or staying with the model. We have to get permission, so, but we have to have justification for staying in.
You look at the geographic area of Pine County, for example, compared to smaller counties, they've got a lot harder.
I laughed a little bit when they talked about local control, thinking it was school board control, and I don't feel like I have any control because I have no say in the, in the, in the numbers and I have a document telling me exactly what we have to follow and, uh but I do appreciate that the, that the county at least has given some local control to, to determine how those numbers affect our school. And I appreciate that.
My question's pretty much identical um to that, because Kathy did. In that it's in, just, let's say Bram area, uh and those are probably attending Bram school. We still have the flexibility to stay open. Um but then when it comes to sports, uh I see that there's like, you know, more than three teams or whatever that can be. Our district just say, they have a, and it's okay not to do the sports event?
Yep, it's a good question, I'll, I'll just paraphrase that because the mic was kinda cutting in and out. So, you know, for example, if there's some students in Kanabik County that go to the Bram schools, and does that affect our Mora school um learning model? And, you know, from what I'm gathering, what I hear from Kathy and the information that they get is we are gonna make that decision with Kanabik Public Health. And um and then they would say, you know, you, that doesn't affect Mora public schools. Or vice versa, like Ogilvy, you know, they could tell Ogilvy, no, all of the cases seem to be more related towards Mora and it's really not impacting Ogilvy, so they wouldn't have to stay in the same model. So that's where I think that flexibility. And then Bob, you had a question about sports and, and being able to uh determine whether or not teams would come. Let's say, for example, um I hate to single out a, this is a hypothetical, but let's sing, let's single out Princeton, you know? Uh Princeton had an outbreak and they were gonna come for, to our cross-country meet. And could we say that we didn't want them to come? I, I, yes, we could, and also I, I'm sure that the other school would say, we're not coming. Um so that would uh, that would probably um be a, a safe thing. And safety is, is number one on our priority list, so. And the high school league's taken a pretty um safe standard um by moving football and volleyball, which are some of those higher-risk sports, and then allowing cross-country and tennis and swimming um in the fall to continue with limited teams, like Bob said.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh question, and I think Kathy can answer this, it's along those same lines, but sure, there's, you know, the kids are in Ogilvy, everything else, but where are the parents going? Cause I'm assuming they're gonna be doing some of that contact tracing or at least looking at it saying, oh, yeah, the kid goes to Ogilvy, but the person works for Kanabik County Sheriff's Office and they're in there. I mean, that's kinda what I took Kathy to mean, that they'll look at those general things. If, if the kids go to Ogilvy and the parents both work in Malaca going, okay, there's very little risk for over here. Or if it's at one of the senior care centers or something like that. Is that a clarificate, young, is that what you guys have taken?
Yeah, that's what I understand. And it sounds like they get pretty detailed information on the actual cases.
Sure.
Um and, you know, like you saw the report that she gave us, they connect it to the parents in the school and things like that. So um I don't get to see all that detailed stuff, but um Kathy and Kate, Kate Meznick, she built this huge graph, uh Excel spreadsheet and the number of cases and when they, when they would consider changing models based on the cases and things, I mean, it goes single by case. Um it's pretty impressive, um I could share that with you at some point too, if you're, you're interested in that, so. Yeah, I mean, I feel really good about Kanabik Public Health and they've got a good handle on it. Um and they've been just huge in communicating with Kathy Belshym and myself. And we have a meeting, a standing meeting uh Thursday afternoon and we talked for a half hour. And then Kanabik uh has like an emergency plan where they have all the different community in Mora. Like they'll have the city, the school, um they'll have some of the elderly care places and the hospital and everybody kinda talks about where they're at in their COVID planning and where they're at with, you know, keeping people safe and the Chamber of Commerce and all those sort of things. So it's, it, I feel really connected um to what's going on within the community in the county.
Well, it's a concerted effort on their part to keep the case numbers as low as humanly possible, I mean, that's.
Right.
Being proactive and, but it's a lot of work on their end, but definitely is good for us. Um any other questions regarding the model? Thank you, both of you, and to everybody on the team again, it's amazing. And um so it's a considerable of the um.
We have open forum.
I'm sorry, we have open forum.
You're welcome.
Uh yes, we are, had decided we would schedule an open forum at this point because there may be other comments, concerns, questions, so would anybody like to address it at this time? Hello, Tom, yes. Thanks for being here.
Most of what I was wanted to ask tonight was covered very well by everybody. Um the, the case per county number kinda worries me because I, at the end of the hallway and the long-term care facilities are included in that, just because of the fact that the workers that take care of the people in the long care facilities also have them in our school this. So those numbers would be in that, in that total. And that could overnight turn, make, make it so that we would have to go to a plan B or a plan C. Um and enough on that. Um the second thing I wanted to talk about was, um I have two granddaughters. One of them attends Mora Elementary full-time, the other one is, is in the Rum River North program. Um I hadn't seen what Rum River had put out, but I haven't gotten anything from Rum River personally yet in the mail or email or iPhone or anything, so I don't know what they're planning to doing, is doing. But her first year of preschool was here at Mora Elementary. Her second year of preschool, they shipped her off to Malax and Malax County. And now this year, they're gonna ship her off down to Cambridge, which is down in Iceni County. My question is, is if one of the staff members down there at Rum River and Iceni County comes up positive and they send this kids home, then do I need to pull my daughter out? and they send these kids home, then do I need to pull my daughter out of Mora Elementary because she had potentially been exposed? What, how does a school board and the district going to handle something like that?
That's a great question, and the most likely answer will be yes. But that's what I was talking to Anna, Anna Graut, about was, when are we going to get those more solid recommendations coming from Minnesota Department of Health as to how much of a quarantine spread are we going to have to throw around our net when we have one person that tests positive? How big is that net going to be cast to say, okay, now everybody, all these people can't come to school for 10 to 14 days as well? So most likely, the answer is yes, but right now, we don't have the clear guidance on that.
Okay, I guess a follow-up on that would be, if, God forbid, one of our teachers happens to test positive, and then that means that her whole class and the people that she was, or he was with, they all get quarantined for 14 days. Do they automatically go to that hybrid learning program? I mean, I think you brought it up earlier in it. And if such, then would, the same case would go to the other way. My daughter, or my granddaughter has to come home for 14 days to quarantine, then I would also have to pull my special needs granddaughter out of the school in Cambridge. That kind of problem, what's the difference between doing a hybrid kindergarten program that comes from Mora here versus doing a hybrid kindergarten program that comes from Rum River North? I mean, if they're both going to be on computer, to me, it would make more sense to keep it all from the same school. But again, that's not my call, and I don't have an answer for that.
How about Ann or anybody that's-
So, the Department of Health worked very closely with us when looking for close contacts. And when they talk about close contacts, that's within six feet for 15 minutes or more. And so depending upon when an isolated case occurs, they're going to do their contact tracing to see, were you a close contact? Are you not a close contact? And then it'll go from there. So when we, if, more so like if we talk about, if you look at adults and you have a coworker that might be getting tested, but you are considered a close contact, your child might not necessarily be a close contact because it's a contact of a contact. And so Department of Health is going to work with all of those scenarios, and we don't necessarily have the answers right now because it's still a work in progress. I'm not sure how it'll work district to district, and they will work with us. And as school nurses, we all communicate and we meet on a Google Meet, Zoom format. And so I anticipate us being in contact if that were to happen. And MDH will be working with the regionals and the local public health and the school nurses.
How about the first question that Tom had related to siblings in two different programs or-
Two different districts.
School district, basically, because when you send them to, when you send them to a program, like last year when she was in Malaca, we followed Malaca School Days, we followed Malaca Holiday, whatever. And then in the spring, when they went to this, they wanted to do it all video, Zoom, Google Meet, because it's the program they tried to use. And I don't know about other people, but where I live, internet is scarce. I've taken care of that problem by switching internet companies and working so that I now have the megabytes per second that I can get to support that. But in the spring, to be quite honest with you, I was caught with my pants down around my ankles.
You weren't the only one.
Because I was not, I was not prepared. I'm one of those people that prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And, but with the special needs kids crossing county lines, then you're opening, they're being susceptible to everything that happens in those other counties that our children are not in. And I was wondering if it might be a better thing to just pull her from Rum River North and put her into the, put her back here. If it goes to, if we start getting, because I can see that, you know, like a case here comes up and a case here. I mean, I don't know, how about your other kids? But I have, my grandchildren wake up the sniffles every once in a while, and it's a-
Sounds like a good question.
It's a five-minute, it's a five-minute decision you have to make in the morning, whether you put them on the bus or you keep them home. And then on those days that you do keep them home, would they be eligible to log online? Like the iXL program that the elementary school used last year worked real good at my house for my oldest. But the video conference with Rum River North student did not work well at all. It was like a total disaster.
So you probably need to involve the caseworker, the teacher that has in charge of the IP.
This sounds like a really complicated issue, and we hope to be able to individually help people like you that are in this.
But those students do have IEPs and caseworkers, so you should be able to have that conversation.
Well, yes, we all have the IEPs. Mrs. Sparts is going to have Rachel's IEP team since she's been, you know, here at the school. And she knows Rachel, and she knows what kind of problems she can be.
But you need a comfort level. You need an understanding of what the best-
Correct.
-way to serve your kids is.
It's just, it's just that, I'm concerned, this is her third school in three years.
Yeah.
She has not been able to socially make any kind of permanent, long-lasting friends. And then, you know, that's getting into the mental health thing, which you've already covered. And that there will be counselors and everything available to the students to kind of lean on if they need it.
We're not in an ideal situation. It's too bad, and nobody likes it.
Right, this is a day-by-day thing. We're learning day by day, and I expect changes day by day, week by week through this program. Like I said, I want to prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
I'd suggest that none of us were ready for what happened this spring. And, you know, this document and what we've just been through is coming out of learning that's happened just in the last few months. And so I'd ask that you give that a chance and be patient with it and keep communicating. And if there's issues, bring them up, and we'll individually work through them.
And I guess the last question would be transportation for these special ed children. How is that going to work? Or is that not been figured out yet? Correct. You've provided transportation in the past, and you know what? At first, it was just my one granddaughter, which I thought was a ridiculous waste of money to have a van come pick her up and drive her all the way out to Malaca. But by the end of the school year, there was three, three if not four children in the van, which makes it a little bit more cost-effective for the district. Okay, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you for your time.
Well, I'm going to add to this, that thank God for you. You're the reason that these kids are going to do well and not fall through the cracks. We're probably more concerned about the ones that aren't here, that are in similar situations or worse, that aren't coming up with a plan for this. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being involved with these kids, and let us help. Let it be continuously in contact so that we can help you get the help those kids need.
And if you have a question, you can bet that somebody else has a similar question.
I briefly spoke with Shane, and he's going to help me out on my computer literacy. There might be more grandparents out that have children in the school district that-
Parents, grandparents.
While you folks were in college learning how to run computers, I was overseas. So I have enough computer knowledge to get myself in trouble to where I have to call somebody like Shane and say, hey, Shane, do you know how to unlock my tablet? Because, you know, I've holed myself again. And then I would like, I guess, I don't know, maybe if we could set up some kind, if the school district could set up some kind of tech class, crash course tech class for parents and grandparents that do not, or that are not as computer literate is, I mean-
Great community.
There's high school kids that are more computer literate than I am because they've been using computers.
That's noted. I mean, this is new territory in that.
Like I said, everything's going to change day by day, and I expect that. I just, I'm just trying to get ahead of the ballgame, and like I said, prepare for the worst and hope for the best. I mean, that's all we can all do at this time.
Well, thank you. There are a lot of-
Our school workers.
Good questions in your-
Again, I'm done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, anybody else? Yes.
Ann Bankers, and a lifelong, or almost lifelong resident of Kanabik County, and also here as a representative of Elia Health. And I first want to say I am so impressed by the work that you have done over the summer in planning. It is awesome. We want to be here as a community partner as well, and I'm connected with Ann this week. Last, I can answer a question that Bob had regarding strep testing. We just set this up this week. If a patient comes in for strep test, part of our protocol is automatic a COVID test at the same time. So if they come to Elia for that, that's the answer. So, very good. I'm excited.
How many days does that take?
Pardon me?
COVID testing, how many days does that take now to get the results?
Anywhere from 24 hours to seven days, and it seems to be no rhyme or reason to which lab it goes to or the state.
And just after that, I was just going to say, it does, we do have more rapid tests, but they're very limited in the, our ability to do them.
Right now, as Bob said, we have very limited supplies to do the rapid, or what we call the in-house test. And we save those for someone that might be an inpatient or that we really have an emergency surgery for, that we need to do things very differently. We do have something on order where the equipment actually, I think, just arrived today to do more rapid tests. However, we are waiting for supplies. We're hoping by the end of September to have many more opportunities for the rapid test.
Is there a possibility that if a teacher were to come in, that a rapid test could be done that way to make sure things get properly shut down quicker? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
That's a great question, and Bob can probably answer this as well. It is so tricky by our limited supplies. We're hoping with this different testing module that we have, the company, of course, it was during sales time, said that they would provide us without a true guarantee because the government at any time can pull all the supplies and send somewhere else. But we think that we will have the opportunity to do much more rapid. Right now, it's very prioritized.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
My pleasure.
Yes, working together. Thanks, Dan. Anybody else have any comments or want to address the board? Then we will move on to item number five, Consider Approval of the Resolution of Adoption of the Base Learning Model. It's in your pocket. And Dan, do you want to briefly take us through it, please?
Let me find the right page. All right, so this resolution really just speaks to what we've talked about so far. And you know how quickly we would have to move from model to model, learning model possibly, in the different phases. And so this gives the superintendent the ability to communicate with the school board on when we would need to change learning models. And so it just walks us through each of those things where it's a responsibility of the superintendent to review with the school board. And based on the executive order from the Governor Walz and the Safe Learning Plan, the different models there halfway down, the different models, and we called them phases. And it talks about the Department of Ed and the Department of Health, along with the superintendent and the school board, conferring with the school board, the different learning models, along with guidance from Kanabik County Health. And so based on the recommendations from Kanabik County Health and our current COVID numbers, I'm recommending to the board for in-person learning for the fall. And that's based, as Kathy duly noted to me, based on the numbers, the current numbers and that learning model. Things I will, I will, I guess, state, things could change between now, which the date is August 13th, right? And we don't start school till September 7th. And so like Kathy said, it's going to be the responsibility of all, all people in our community to stay safe and do their part so we can continue to stay in-person learning for the fall. And based on those considerations, and then, and that just reiterates the recommendation to open the school year based on what information we have right now to in-person learning. And then on the second page, it talks about the superintendent would consult with the school board chair along with notifying the school board when we would have to select a different learning model. And it would allow the superintendent, along with the administration, to change the learning model without having a special board meeting every time we do that. And again, it just talks about not making the decision in isolation, but using the guidance by MDE, MDH, and Kanabik County Health to make that decision. Is that pretty?
Yes, and essentially, it's the best plan we have, I believe, based on the most current information from those resources that you said we're using, Department of Health.
Yep, and it gives us the flexibility to change models when we need to. And the school board would be notified and consulted with. And like I said, we wouldn't, Dan Voce wouldn't be doing this all on his own.
Well, I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob Wood. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Ethan. Discussion, any further discussion? Okay, we will vote by Rock House. So, Bob Jensen.
I just first want to say thanks, Dan, for sending this stuff out to us ahead of time. It was very, very helpful to feel comfortable about making a decision on this matter, so I would vote yes.
I vote yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Tammy, are you still with us?
I am, yes.
All right, so we have six voting in favor with zero opposed. And so that resolution is adopted. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I want to thank the school board for being informed. I know that, you know, we talked about drinking out of a fire hose or two. You guys probably have been doing the same thing. I know I've provided some information, and they're not always easy to go through. But when I've talked to all of you, you've been very well informed and updated. So as elected officials, I think the community should feel really grateful to have such good leadership from the school board.
It will be a continued work in progress, and have our blessing start to this school year, so thank you. Okay, we have another couple items on the agenda tonight. Next, item number six. We are going to consider approving the resignation request of Brenda, elementary principal.
Can we just say no?
I think we should have some, I think we should have some discussion. Bittersweet. As I said to Brenda, I'm very happy for the opportunities that she has right now. But would somebody be willing to make a motion?
I'll move her resignation request.
Motion by Bob Jensen. Is there a second? Referring to Vice Scott, further discussion.
Thank you, Brenda, for everything you've done.
And continue her to do. Thank you for sticking with us and right to the end here.
You hit the ground running when you came to Mora, and I'll just, I can't even begin to recount the things that you've accomplished or the asset that you've been to the school district in all of your capacities. in all of your capacities and you will be missed, so.
Impressive.
Best of luck. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we should have done roll call, but it sounds like we have a unanimous vote. I heard Tammy chime in there too, so, um, apologize Tammy, thank you. Um, that motion passes unanimously, so. All right, um, we have some minutes, this meeting, specifically the regular meetings of July and June. And then the special meeting that we, or the work session, I guess it was a meeting? No, it wasn't, it was a work session with MSBA, um, retreat, working meeting, whatever you wanna call it. I think we can approve those in one motion. Have you had a chance to look? Have you made a motion? Scott?
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Bob Woods. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A question on the minutes as far as, it talks about like, uh, the June 25th meeting and we're all in room 238. And, uh, since there only can be 10 people in that room or some such a number, it indicates more than that and I don't believe most of those people were in the room. They would take turns, uh, coming in and out. And I think that our minutes should reflect, uh, something that.
We were observing social distancing?
Yeah, and the number of people that could be in the room, I believe it was 10 and, and I believe it was consistent with that throughout the time that these people would come in and do their presentations, if I recall right. And then that would be on both sets of minutes, I believe. And then, uh, then under, motion was made, and this would be, I'm sorry, on June 25th again, um, motion was made by Mo to approve the agreement between, uh, Independent School District 332 and the Bus Driver Group. And, uh, there was one abstention and I believe it should say that it was me. That abstained because.
So that would be a correction then?
Yep, because of, uh, my very limited employment with that group.
Doesn't it say none opposed and one abstained?
But I believe it should say me.
Oh, specifically, okay.
Just to be specific.
I see, okay.
Okay, so noted, it could, um, make that correction.
With those, with those.
And the July meeting was here in the more elementary commons, so we should be good there.
We should be fine there, yep.
Okay, so, we have a motion with those two corrections or clarifications. The abstention regarding the bus driver agreement motion was, uh, Bob Jensen abstaining. And then just, uh, to clarify that we were observing social distancing protocols in the Hudson meeting held in the room 238.
As a matter of order, is that how you amend your motion, Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I had agreed, but I, I did it verbally, physically not verbally.
And Bob Woods is okay with it also?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let us vote by roll call, so we get Tammy in on the vote, Bob Jensen?
Yes.
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 Tammy?
Yep.
All right, that motion passes unanimously, thank you, everybody. All right, brings us to adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Told.
Second.
Motion by Bob Jensen, second by Ethan, all in favor of that motion? Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, excuse me?
She was delayed.
Oh.